Hello, everyone. Good evening. The time is now six thirty. The Select Board would like to commence Monday night's April 24, 2023, meeting of the Select Board, held here in the Walk White Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. Broadcast live on local cable, Channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. The time now being six thirty, we will convene in open session. We'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's been a significant amount of tragedy and stuff throughout the United States, and the tribe's lost its chief recently as well, and asked for a moment of silence for all those that have passed. Thank you. I now accept a motion, I accept a motion to approve meeting minutes of the Select Board meeting held Monday, April 3.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously by all present. Moving on to appointments and hearings, I'd like to first begin with public comment under this section. We only have two tonight. I'd like to welcome Mr. Ken Dubrowski back to the Select Board.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It has.
Is everybody coming? Show of hands, we'll miss you.
We all missed you. Thank you, Ken.
Got some handouts here. Got a lot to cover tonight, I only got my three minutes. And so, anyway, I guess you all saw the, my buddy in the enterprise last week.
Yes.
And so, the first, on this side, you know, I quoted some numbers saying that the decision to debt finance the HVA systems in the roof added sixty percent to the cost of the assets. And, you know, my wife's like, it can't be sixty. And I'm like, no, Kath, here it's sixty. So here's how you come up with the sixty, okay? I mean, it does add sixty percent. This is a simple amortization schedule. I mean, I put a thousand dollars in, but because it's relative, you can put any number in there. So it is going to be, it's going to be sixty percent for twenty years at five percent. And on the fire truck, it's, you know, only five years, but at the five percent, it adds fifteen percent. My whole point here is, as, you know, a couple weeks ago, we had a conversation about debt and, you know, it's like, you know, statutory borrowing limits and all that kind. And it's like, you know, it's expensive. I mean, you guys were like, oh, yeah, we can borrow eighty million dollars. I'm like, yeah, you can, but should you? I mean, debt is expensive, and it's gotten expensive recently because, you know, interest rates were so long for so, I mean, so low for so long, but now that we don't live in that world anymore. So, again, it is expensive. So when you think, and when you think about it, right, what is interest, right? From an economic perspective, you're either buying or selling time. The only thing we've done here is we forestalled the inevitable, okay? We should have been funding the replacement of these assets in the past, but because we didn't, now we have to do it with debt, and so in the future. So basically, what you did is you traded off a lower, because you're going to fund it with a tax increase, right? So you funded, you traded off a smaller tax increase in the past for a bigger one in the future. So, again, this is why, for a small municipality, debt should be avoided, especially for assets like this, that don't provide any additional capability. I mean, the only thing we're doing is replacing stuff we already have. So, again, I do want to talk about one other thing, the flip side. Okay, the police cars. We're going to lease these things, right? Okay. You look at the blue book, it's back there someplace. Okay, you're asking for, you know, the last year of the three-year lease was on, which is on the back here. I'm talking about the block here on the bottom. This is what we're asking for. You're asking for total lease payments of fifty-six thousand for the four vehicles from two years ago, okay? So that's an average annual payment per vehicle of fourteen grand. Okay, the new one, the new news, is ten vehicles for starting year one of a three-year lease. So that's a hundred ninety-nine thousand, annual payment for vehicle is twenty grand. So you're going from fourteen to twenty grand, so that's a forty-two percent increase. Give me a minute. Okay? So you say to yourself, man, that's pretty big, forty-two percent in two years. Inflation's gone up, but, you know, that's a lot. So what's on the left-hand side here is basically the data, I pulled it from the St. Louis Fed, but it's basically the Bureau of Labor Statistics. This is the CPI for new vehicle sales in the United States, okay? I ran it for a two-year period, okay? That's gone up nineteen percent. So, again, the cost of, again, it's not apples to apples, but it's close, it's indicative. So why is the cost of this lease double, going up twice as fast as the cost of the vehicles? Now, I'm thinking it's because of the interest factor embedded in the lease, which gets me back to where I started, that, you know, a lease is debt financing. We probably should avoid these things.
I'd welcome your comments to the Finance Commission, and if you wanted to come, I'm going to offer Uptown Manager to-
I don't like commenting in response to public comments, but I would like to say one thing.
Sure.
You got to factor in cages, light bars, et cetera, et cetera. And we've done an extended study on whether to lease or to purchase. And to purchase ten vehicles in one year without spreading it over three years.
Right.
Let me sit down with you, so you can get your facts straight, and then maybe we can come back.
No, I get it. Like I said, I understand these aren't just regular vehicles. That's what I said. It's not apples to apples.
Yeah, I'd welcome you to come in and speak with Town Manager, one-to-one, and kind of-
No, but I guess-
Address some of your concerns.
The reason I'm looping back with it is, you know, a lease is just debt financing. And, again, as the, I bet the money factor in these leases has gone up in the two years because the interest rates have gone up. So it's more the, I'm sorry, it's more the interest factor, and, you know, that's-
We appreciate your input. Thank you. The next one we have is Marie Stevenson.
Yeah, I am-
Could you please come to the mic?
I'm sorry, yes. I don't know if this is the right time, is what I wanted to say. I would like to comment on a hearing that's going along with Mohammed Fat, and I can hold off on that, or I can speak to it now?
So that is a public hearing, so that will afford opportunity at that time to speak specifically to that issue.
Better to speak to that now. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last name that signed up for public comment, so we're going to move on. Discussion and certification of the hiring process, Public Safety Dispatcher Gina Kaya. Is that pronounced right?
Yes. If I could, Mr. Chair, as you can see from Captain Rose, the tests were performed, and the process was followed, and the Human Resources Department can attest to the fact that all town policies and procedures were followed, and were ready for certification, unless the Board asks questions.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the certification of the hiring process for the Public Safety Dispatcher Gina Kaya.
So moved.
At this time.
Second.
Hearing of first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion was unanimously approved by all present. Discussion and approval of the following appointments. Counsel on Aging, Ron Marowitz. Term expires June 30, 2025.
Motion to approve Ron Marowitz for the Council of Aging. Term expires June 30, 2025.
Second.
Hearing of first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is unanimously approved by all present. Counsel on Aging, appointment of Judith Schofield. Term expires June 30, 2024. I understand that Judith is here. Does the Board have any questions of Judith? I think we're all set. I'd accept a motion to approve Judith Schofield to be appointed with the term expiring June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion is approved by all present unanimously. A little behind schedule. The time, six thirty-five, we'll have the public hearing for the new annual wine and malt license for Abdul Hafiz Mian, DBA Mashpee Country Store, located at 387 Main Street. Clerk, if you could read the public hearing notice?
Pursuant to the Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the application of Abdul Hafiz Mian. Is that correct? Mian?
That's correct.
Doing business as Mashpee County Store. Abdul Hafiz Mian, manager for a new annual wines and malt beverages, package store license, located at 187 Main Street, Mashpee, Mass. Said public hearing will be Monday, today, the 24th of April.
Just one correction, 387 Main Street. Thank you. Hello.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I represent Mr. Mian, who is the applicant and the proposed manager for the liquor license you've just recited. Mr. Mian is here as well, if you have any questions for him. But I'll start by saying the application is complete. I believe it's accurate. The proposed manager, Mr. Mian, is a U.S. citizen over the age of 21, no criminal record, very experienced with the service of alcohol. He's been a very responsible owner at both of his locations, one of them here in Mashpee since 1998, right on the other side of that wall, apparently. And he has another location in Sandwich that he's owned since 2004, which is the Sandwich Mart and Spirits up on Route 6A. Both good locations, well-run, professionally done. As you know, the store presently sells groceries, coffee, lottery tickets, and has a deli counter. The proposal would be to add beer and wine to the offerings on either side of the store as you come in. So the counter being right at the front door would have good sightlines. Also, there are multiple cameras in the store already in there, and he'd also, if approved, would get an ID check system for running licenses immediately right through. Wouldn't have to leave it to judgment, we just run it through a machine, and if it doesn't, doesn't have green lights, it's not going to make the sale. So, you know, again, I think that with all his experience and his resume is a part of the application as well, I think you can see that this is a well-warranted request. I can also tell you that, you know, if you're wondering why, why now, a number of his clientele has had been requesting that he add these products for a number of years, and it's just, it's logical to start doing that now. So we would request that the Board approve the application. We would invite you to have, if you have any questions for Mr. Mian, I can have him come up, or if you have anything for me about the application, I'm happy to answer that for you.
Did any members of the Board have questions or concerns?
Not at all.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing. My understanding from the abuser list is that there is a church located within 500 feet of the store, and I believe it's across the street here. So there does need to be a finding in any decision that it's not going to be detrimental to the spiritual activities of that church. That has to be a finding. I don't know if there's anyone here who, from the church or not, but it's in the statute.
Town Manager?
Were they notified?
They were on the abuser list, yes.
That's what I thought.
Yep. And I have submitted the receipts. The green cards are coming in. I'll return those to the office once I have them all back.
They weren't notified.
And the way you, could you repeat the terminology, the phrasing of that statute?
Sure. It's Mass. General Laws 138, Section 16C, like Charlie. It says that the local licensing authority must determine in writing and after a hearing that the premises are not detrimental to the spiritual activities of the church within 500 feet of the business.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have one question for Town Manager's office. Under the new guidance package that we got under quota, it underwinds malt. It sounds like we are limited to the five.
You're talking about the limit?
Yes, the limit.
The tab in the backpack?
I know that, I'm sorry. I know that Stephanie, when she did this, did check that to be sure there was a license available, and we assured that it was.
As I thought that I saw, on the last page of it, Town of Mashpee Annual Alcohol Beverages Licensing Report, under Wine and Malt, it looks like, one, two, three, four. It looks like there's five already. Unless I'm reading this wrong. It looked like four, all alcohol, and five, wine and malt.
We were under the impression that we're okay with this, but if you have any doubts, then what I would suggest that the Board do is approve it, if you were to do that.
With a condition?
With the condition, and just let us double-check, so that we're making sure that we're not exceeding any limit.
David, just so you understand, I just received a text that one was given up, one of the ones that was issued last, was given up last year.
Perfect. Okay.
Hence, we're within our limit.
So I guess if the Board has no further questions, I'd like to open it up to the public. Does anyone from the audience have concerns with this application, subsequent potential approval? Hearing none. The Board, I'd entertain a motion to accept and approve-
Close the public hearing.
Oh, close. At this time, I'd accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So, none of the meetings have been closed. We'll consider the approval of the new annual wine and malt license for Abdul Hafiz Mian, doing business as Mashpee Country Store, located at 387 Main Street, Mashpee, Mass. With the condition that the, we issue a finding at this time, that the establishment has no detrimental impact to the spiritual activities of the church, per Chapter 138, Mass. General Law, subsection 16.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Good luck on that.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have discussion and approval of a public hearing on the Alcohol Beverages License Amendment, 99 West LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant, located at 8 Ryan's Way, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, for changes of officers.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could, this is just at a national level, changing names, and we've had to do this before. It's a formality.
Clerk, if you could read the public hearing notice?
We'll do. You almost said the whole thing for us, anyway. Thank you.
Pursuant to Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Bylaws, the Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the alcoholic beverage license application of 99 West LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant, for a change of offices located at 8 Ryan's Way, Mashpee, Mass. Said hearing will be held on Monday, tonight, at 6:40, Great Neck Road, Mass.
Thank you. So we don't have any representatives from the 99 Restaurant? I take it. Okay. So I'll open it up to questions of the Board. None at this time. Open it up to the audience for any public comment on this application. Hearing none. Return it back to the Board. Any questions? No? I'd accept a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. I'd accept a motion to approve the said liquor license for the change of officers for the 99 West LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant, at this time.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion, that motion is unanimously approved by all present. Moving right along, we have the, there's a public hearing for the Alcohol Beverages License Amendment to 25 Market Street, Incorporated, doing business as Cafe Trevy. If the clerk would read the public hearing notice at this time?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to the Chapter 138, Section 16A of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the Alcohol Beverages License Amendment application of 25 Market Street, Inc., doing business as Cafe Trevy, 25 Market Street, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, for a change of altercation, of alterations of premises.
Thank you.
Said, will me read the rest, I'll leave it. Said, hearing will be held on Monday, April 24, tonight, in the Town of Mashpee Town Hall.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I respectfully request that the Board continue this public hearing until May 15. The reason being is they did not put the abuser's notices out, and we were just informed of that this afternoon. So therefore, I respectfully request that the Board continue this public hearing until May 15, because obviously, May 1 is town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So at this time, I'd accept a motion based on Town Manager's advisement to continue the public hearing for the Alcohol Beverages License Amendment due to the change of alteration of premises to our May 15 meeting.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second. Any discussion? No? Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously by all present. So we're a little early for the next scheduled for seven o'clock. Did anyone have any comments or concerns on the public participation, public meetings, policy change? I didn't either. So at this time, I accept a motion to approve the- So at this time, I accept a motion to approve the policy number 81, public participation in public meetings.
As revised.
Revisions as revised.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Michaela?
Yes.
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 John?
Yes.
Carol? I'm a yes as well. That motion passes unanimously by all present. And we might have time for one more. At this time, I'd entertain the discussion under new business, a discussion and approval of proclamation honoring the Council on Aging Volunteers. Has everyone had opportunity to read the proclamation?
Do you want to read it?
Sure. Yeah. At this time, we're considering a Mashpee Select Board proclamation for the Council on Aging Volunteers, whereas the Mashpee Select Board recognizes how dedicated and helpful the Council on Aging Volunteers are, and whereas the volunteers are essential for the Council on Aging to arrange for the senior population of Mashpee to receive much-needed services and activities, and whereas the friendly visitor program offers much-needed friendship, collegiality, and kindness to seniors unable to leave their homes, and whereas the volunteers are invaluable to the operation of the Mashpee Thrift Shop located at the Mashpee Senior Center, and whereas the volunteers transport many of Mashpee's older citizens to appointments and events and deliver for the meal, deliver for the Meals on Wheels program, as well as bringing flowers to those celebrating their 90th and beyond birthdays, and whereas the faithful volunteers work to help hold social events for seniors and are there to act as greeters and receptionists to those that come to the senior center, and therefore, we, the members of the Mashpee Select Board, do hereby proclaim, April 27th, 2023, to be Council on Aging Volunteers Day in the Town of Mashpee.
Very good.
At this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the Mashpee Select Board proclamation on Council on Aging Volunteers.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, and so that passes unanimously. Thank you for all the work that the volunteers do. I think we're close enough to the seven o'clock hour. So at this time, we have the public hearing that was continued from March 13th, 2023, discussion and vote relative to the removal of Mohammed Fad from the Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee pursuant to Mashpee Charter, Section 7-9. Clerk, if you could read the public hearing notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts Home Room Charter, Section 7-9, the Mashpee Select Board will conduct a continued session of the public hearing relative to the proposed removal of Mohammed Fahad as an appointed member of the Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee on Monday, April 24th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, in the Wacoite Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, North, Mashpee, Mass. You may submit comments and questions by email, boardaselectments@govern.gov, prior to the meeting date and time.
Thank you. Town Manager? If we could ask the two parties to come up to the tables? Or representative from the Community Garden Committee?
And just as a refresher, I believe we're at the juncture in the last hearing where the Select Board was asked if they had any questions, and I think we're at the point where the garden committee chair, who is present tonight, has a statement, and I think in response to that, there may be questions for her as a result of the statement, and then after that, unless the board has questions, I think we've reached the point where it's at the end.
Yeah, that is consistent with my recollection. I know we spent quite a bit of time at the last public hearing, hearing both sides, and I think we fell short on time on hearing the kind of closing statements, and so at this time, I'd like to hear from both sides, the closing statements, to refresh our memories and just to summarize.
May I start?
Yes.
Okay, is this on? I'm not sure.
You might want to tip it up a little bit. That should be good.
Okay, yeah. My name is Virginia Scharfenberg. I'm chairperson of the Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee. I was not here at the March 13th hearing, and as a committee, we had not understood that we needed to come prepared with a complete statement. We thought that we just needed to confirm that we had in fact voted as a board to request the Select Board to dismiss the member Mohammed Fad. Therefore, tonight, I think that I need to be a little bit more explicit. I don't want to take up too much time, but I need to make sure some things are in the record. I am here representing five committee members. We normally, and then Mohammed is a six, we normally have seven, but we have an opening now, so I'm representing them, and several of them are in the audience here. We're requesting that Mohammed Fad be removed from the committee due to his persistent and deliberate disregard of committee decisions as well as garden rules and protocols over the course of the 2023 garden season and up to this very moment. It is important to note that the Select Board issued community garden rules and regulations in 2019, prior to the revitalized gardens' first season in 2020, and that the committee was given specific authority to enforce them. Subsequent to a vote of no confidence at our July 20th, '22 meeting, the committee voted unanimously at its August 17th meeting to ask the town manager to forward to the Select Board our formal request for Mr. Fad's dismissal, and I know you had received a lot of those papers in your package in March. We do not take this situation lightly. In fact, we would, we wish we didn't need to say all this publicly. However, Mr. Fad has consistently been contentious, unreasonable, and unproductive as a board member, and has greatly impeded our ability to conduct garden business at our meetings. Unfortunately, much of the meeting on March 13th revolved around Mr. Fad's participation in the garden itself as a gardener, and his subsequent removal by our committee, per the rules and regulations. He was removed due to his inability or disinterest in following the rules as written and in complying with overall garden decisions of the committee. This was a separate matter entirely, and is not the matter that is being considered tonight. I want everybody to understand that very clearly. What is under consideration today, once again, as I said, is only our request for the dismissal. The real issue is what has caused the remaining five members of the committee to vote to remove Mr. Fad. This vote was not a rash decision. It was a long time in coming and was not taken lightly. We had absolutely no desire to have this be such a public, time-consuming, and prolonged process. The reason I decided to provide more details is to ensure that we all understand the necessity of the dismissal. Reason number one, Mr. Fad does not contribute as a member of the board. He rarely participates in conversation and very often sits looking at his computer. He is never offered to lead projects, and twice when small tasks were discussed, he failed to follow through. While garden rules explicitly mention up to two gardener volunteer hours per month, he has not offered even one hour since the garden began in 2019. These hours can be contributed at any time and don't have to be completed only when a group is present. When once asked why this was the case, he replied, "I'm a busy guy." The rest of us spend a lot of time organizing workdays and garden get-togethers. He never participates in any of these in any way. I think I'm going to skip to reason three and go back to reason two. It's a little more understandable that way. So now what would be reason two? He has not supported rules and procedures that ensure the beauty and ongoing care of the community garden and its place within the historic Attican property. In fact, he undermines some of our efforts. Tax dollars from Mashpee residents have generously been given to this cause. Time is spent by many volunteers to maintain and beautify the entire area, inside and outside of the fenced-in area. Weeds are removed, a native plant demonstration area is being created to show gardeners and the public how beautiful and beneficial native plants are, and trash that is thrown in the woods by non-gardeners is regularly cleaned up. The DPW has been consistently supportive and helpful. We asked Mr. Fad to stop using an area adjacent to the garden shed for his own experiments, which he refused to do. He encouraged more aggressive plants to grow in the same area, creating an appearance contrary to what the rest of the committee expected. When told that this area was going to be renovated to create a better composting solution, Mr. Fad went straight to Catherine Laurent to attempt to stop the process without communicating with the rest of the committee first. Mr. Fad was insistent that he was not going to give up his garden area, even though all areas he planted outside of his assigned garden bed were planted without permission from any town official and definitely not from the committee. We ultimately requested DPW to clean up the area and implement their excellent suggestion to create a clean, attractive, and functional space there for garden debris disposal. Over the past couple of years, we have spoken to Mr. Fad about the upkeep of his garden bed and adjacent pathways and the negative standard he sets as a board member for other gardeners. Many weeds were allowed to grow. While we have no objection whatsoever to his description of some of these as edible medicinals, the rules still require tidiness and well-maintained garden pathways. He insisted that he could do whatever he wanted, wherever he wanted, creating a separate garden area in a space he hacked out of the surrounding wooded area. He didn't care that this could send a message to our 34 gardeners to do whatever they wanted anywhere on the Attican property. He refused to relocate his plants elsewhere if it not remove any of it. So the new reason number three. Mr. Fad's disrespect of fellow board members does not make for a well-functioning group. One example, at the first Conservation Commission meeting last fall, at which Mr. Fad asked to be appointed as a land steward for the entirety of the Attican parcel within which the community garden is located, he referred to our board as, quote, "green" and not knowing what we are doing. In fact, my husband and I were leaders in the urban agriculture and community garden movement in Boston in the 1980s and 1990s, and we own an ecological land care business here in Mashpee. Committee member Lynn Harris is a master gardener, and other committee members have extensive gardening experience. We could only interpret his effort before the Conservation Commission as one to attempt an end run around us and our directives about limiting individual gardening to the garden plots assigned within the fenced-in area. It should be noted that Conservation has jurisdiction, excuse me, jurisdiction only over the two pollinator gardens on the site, and that the commission did not pursue his request. Another example, Mr. Fad has stated that the garden standards set forth by the committee and its rules and regulations do not have to be enforced so strictly since it is not a, quote, "master gardener" garden, an obvious dig at Mrs. Harris when she mentioned that things were not tended as they should be. The next reason. Mr. Fad sees rules as only applying to others. His disregard of them has been blatant and disrespects the purpose of the committee and the judgment of its members. He also sets a negative example for fellow gardeners through his actions. In an attempt to try to solve the impasse between the committee and Mr. Fad, the town manager met with Mr. Fad and two of his friends some days before our scheduled January 18, 2023, committee meeting. They developed a proposed compromise for committee consideration. What it was, that it was that if the committee accepted Mr. Fad's proposed revisions to our rules and regulations and reinstated him as a gardener, he would agree to resign from the committee rather than go before the Select Board for a hearing. The town manager informed me shortly before our January 18th meeting this, that this meeting had taken place. I agreed to put the resultant proposal on the agenda. It should be noted that having been a member of the committee since 2019, Mr. Fad never asked to discuss the rules and present proposed changes and his reasons and rationale over the course of the previous years. In fact, one of our board members did account, and over the course of these years, we've discussed the rules and regulations in considerable detail 17 different times. The entire committee went through the existing rules, as well as Mr. Fad's newly proposed rules, which I think you had a copy of both, comparing them one by one. A vote was taken to see if the rules brought before the committee should be adopted. The vote was overwhelmingly against the adoption of the proposed rules, since it was clear that the only one who would benefit from the changes was Mr. Fad. If they had been approved, vegetation would be allowed to fill the walkways, warnings would not be issued to any rule violators in a timely manner, gardeners who are not in good standing would be allowed to renew their membership, individuals or groups would be allowed to hold events in the garden without explicit approval and coordination with the committee, and anyone would be allowed to plant anything anywhere on the Attican property. The rationale behind the vote was requested by the town manager and was detailed in an email sent to him by me on February 24th, and you have copies of that. There were more rules proposed, but it should be clear that if the committee had agreed to the proposed rules, the beautiful, well-kept space that we all see now would cease to exist. That would be a terrible thing for all concerned who have spent many dollars and many hours to create this special place we call the Mashpee Community Garden. The last reason, Mr. Fad could not have been too concerned with the operation of the garden nor his responsibilities as a board member if his attendance record is an indicator of such. In 2022 alone, he was absent from four regularly scheduled committee meetings. In addition, he left two other meetings before adjournment. He has left each of our three meetings of 2023 immediately after his primarily contentious commentary, usually at the beginning of the meetings, choosing not to stay and participate in any of our scheduled agenda items as a contributing board member. Conclusion, any board member, no matter the organization, has a duty to be involved in its operation. That means being proactive in offering ideas, assistance, and relevant questions. It means going above and beyond to accomplish the goals that have been set by rolling up one's sleeves, having conversations with those being served, and with those you are working with. If any board member is not willing to put in that work they have been asked to do and agreed to perform, then they are a hindrance, occupying a seat that could be filled by someone who is truly interesting, interested in advancing the cause of the organization. We are asking to have the seat that is currently occupied by Mr. Fad vacated so that it may be filled by someone who has the same vision of a beautiful, safe, and community-spirited garden for all to enjoy.
Thank you, Virginia. At this time, we'll go to, I guess, the defendant in this instance, and give you opportunity to provide rebuttal and to their summary, and then present your summary as well.
May I? I have to just comment on this, on the language. What we are here for is presenting concluding statements. So I would love to kind of like propose or for you to acquiesce that what was said right now is concluding statement. We're not going back again.
Correct.
Yeah, it is.
That is the understanding, yes.
Thank you. So we're all ready? Yes, yes. Marjorie, will you start?
My voice is hoarse. Marjorie Heck, Hoopole Road. I'm sorry to have this item of the Garden Advisory Committee take up so much time at the Select Board. It's a case of a molehill being turned into a mountain and the mountain getting larger and larger as time goes on. To avoid this type of situation from occurring again with any committee, I think there should be regulations written into every committee's rules that specify be regulations written into every committee's rules that specify due process and mediation for disputes among members. It might also help to have some training and best practices for committee members so that disagreements get resolved earlier. As for the matter at hand, I note once again that both sides agreed to mediation with the town manager, that such mediation took place, that Mohammed Fod agreed to step down from the committee but wanted to keep his garden plot. The Garden Advisory Committee flatly refused to consider this solution or to continue with the mediation process, as has been previously agreed. I want to stress that this is a case of personal animosity and differences, not "racism", unquote. Mohammed and those who spoke on his behalf did not use this word. We did not imply that the Garden Committee was racist, and we don't think the word is relevant to this situation. The word racism was used only by a Select Board member. From my experience, there are legitimate disagreements within groups and committees. For a committee to function, not everyone has to agree on everything, as you know. Committees are not social clubs only for members who agree. There are civil ways of dealing with differences that allow the work of a committee to continue. Some examples here. Mohammed thought that gardeners should dispose of their own plant waste and that a concrete slab for plant waste serviced by the DPW was not necessary. The Committee voted for the slab. So was it necessary to remove him from the Committee and his garden plot because he disagreed? Mohammed thought that all gardeners should have the emails of other gardeners who agreed on their application for a plot to share that information with all. The committee majority disagreed. Again, is that grounds for removal? Plants from his garden intruded on the pathway. Again, grounds for removal? I mean, this is not a Kensington Garden or some showplace. This is a community garden. And then there is the rhubarb affair. This very tiny patch of rhubarb was planted on land adjacent to the community garden under Town Regulation Number Eight, which Mohammed interpreted as not prohibiting planting on town line -- land. He put plastic surrounding the small plot to contain the rhubarb because it's invasive. And he talked to the town manager about the regulation. This rhubarb, since extirpated, was a main exhibit by the Committee. Mohammed was accused of using his laptop during committee meetings. I assume it's this one. Yeah. This is hardly a crime. He takes notes, and it helps him to concentrate. I take notes by hand in a notebook -- I'm not advanced enough to do it on a computer -- during meetings for the same reason. Neither actions are grounds for dismissal. As for rule changes, the Committee has been discussing revisions to their rules since 2022. The main revision suggested by Mohammed was adding due process. He did agree that some of the other little changes he mentioned, he was willing to give in on. I mean, that's -- this was the main thing he wanted. It should be noted that Mohammed has been on the Committee since 2018 as a founding member. For the six years on the Committee, he was never ruled out of order at a committee meeting. As one of the original members of the Committee, he is committed to the idea of providing plots for residents to grow their own food. There may be cultural and linguistic differences here that make communication difficult. It also may be the case, in my view, that a building animosity on the part of committee members has pushed Mohammed into a corner. From my observation, committee members are uncomfortable with Mohammed's way of speaking. That doesn't make him a bad guy, nor are the committee members bad guys. Mohammed has agreed to step down from the Committee. In fact, his term expires in June. But he wants to retain his garden plot. He's a gardener with considerable knowledge about herbs and Mediterranean and wild plants that he grows from seed or forages. He uses what he grows in the garden for cooking. He doesn't have his own land to grow things on. In summary, I think it's an unfortunate precedent to kick a Mashpee resident out of a garden plot because of disagreements with the Advisory Committee. This community garden is intended for community use to grow food and produce. Mohammed does not have land of his own to grow foods and herbs. He used the plot to grow things that cannot be bought in stores. He was part of the founding of the garden and the Committee to help people like himself. His plot should be restored. In addition, I asked the Select Board to ensure that a provision for due process and mediation be included in all committee and board regulations. This affair is an embarrassment for the town. I hope that such a situation will not be repeated. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd open it up to members of the Board. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I believe you -- Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. I believe you have a handout that we gave you that showed how Mohammed being -- participating in the public outreach for the Committee, for the garden, and that he has been involved with the garden for many, many years. Good evening, Chairman Whedon and Select Board Members. I want to affirm the comments of my colleague, Marge. I've said before, these hearings are not about gardening. They are about fairness and good government. First, I want to dispel some misconceptions and rumors. None of us supporting Mr. Fahad ever spoke about or alleged racism. We did refer to diversity and cultural differences. This is not the same as racism. So let's dismiss with this. As a town, we endorse diversity and inclusion. If you don't recall the conversation, you can go back and look at the tape from March 13th, which I did review this weekend. Nor did any of us disparage individual members of the Advisory Committee. There have been some unwelcome comments made about and to Mr. Fahad that I have heard, but that is their free speech right. Freedom of speech is part of the issue before this Board. Mr. Fahad exercised this right in the Advisory Committee meetings. Other members often disagreed with him, but I would hope that this Board would not pass judgment based on this, given that you all enjoy the same right. Disagreement is not cause for removal of a committee member. We must honor diversity and opinion as well as diversity of culture and gardening practices. By their own rules, the Advisory Committee requires multiple warnings in writing before taking action against a gardener. This did not occur with Mr. Fahad. Do we have to reestablish that planting rhubarb outside the garden fence is not cause to remove Mr. Fahad? No. I refer you to Rule Number Eight again. Which gets me to an important issue: due process and fairness. Mr. Fahad, Ms. Hecht, and I have participated together, and Marge and I as representatives and supporters of Mr. Fahad. We have participated in mediation and agreed to meet whenever Town Manager Collins requested. Mediation is, I believe, a better process for resolving disputes than coming before a very busy body such as this Select Board. Mr. Collins proposed mediation, and we came with the intention to find compromise and middle ground. Unfortunately, the Advisory Committee did not. I can only speculate that the Committee rejected the proposal for mediation made by Mr. Collins before this Board on March 13 because they had no intention to find compromise. If I'm incorrect, I await an alternate explanation. As a resident and a member of more than one town committee, this is ultimately the thing that disturbs me most. The Advisory Committee does not own the land, but can unilaterally take away the right of a resident to grow food for their family on public land. In our meetings with Mr. Collins, we stress that this arbitrary power must be checked by a right of appeal to the town manager or his designee. And if you look at the documents that the Committee sent out, our rule proposals, which we offered compromise on, if you look at Rule Number -- our Rule Number 21, that's exactly what it said, and none of their rules have that. With all due respect to Mr. Collins, I'm not trying to add to his workload. However, any check on arbitrary power can often preempt its use. In our efforts, Mr. Fahad, Ms. Hecht, and I proposed a simple clause to be added to the Advisory Committee rules that if a gardener has a dispute with the Committee, he or she can appeal to the town manager, who is the overseer of the garden. I can only surmise that this was the issue the Committee refused to compromise on as it challenges their absolute power. All gardeners deserve protection to their access to grow food on public land. This proposal was not about and is not specific to Mr. Fahad. It is about due process and fairness for all gardeners, residents of Mashpee. I will point out to the members of the Select Board that according to Town Manager Collins, you all have the responsibility to approve the rules of the Advisory Committee. Therefore, it is in your power to include this element in the revisions the Committee is already considering. Mr. Fahad's term on the Advisory Committee expires this June, despite what the town website seems to say today, so perhaps he may not be reappointed. But he does want to grow his greens and vegetables and any other foods he and his family and friends, like me, enjoy, so he should be reinstated as a gardener. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it's my turn right now. Good evening. My name is Mohammed Fahad, a resident of 35 Ashoomit Road in Mashpee. I am a member of the Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee, the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, and the Mashpee Housing Authority, for now. I have been a member of the Mashpee Committee -- Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee since 2018. In fact, I am a founding member of the Committee. I'm sorry, that seems to be repeated, but this is my text. I'm not repeating the -- some facts. My wife, Mary Wagon, who you know is chair of the Planning Board and a member of the Community Preservation Committee. She encouraged me to join the Committee, and we have both been great supporters of the community garden project. We have supported and voted for its funding, volunteered at cleanups. That was initial cleanup. Mary even attended the ceremony when the garden was named after Jeannie's husband, Michael Talbot. My good name has been used by the Committee to raise funds for the garden and funding applications, in media pieces to promote the garden, and -- and my wife's -- and my own photos are actually currently on the town's website advertising the garden, and you have received some at least colored. I do have black and white, but you received the colored one. You could see me standing next to my main opponent on the Committee, Advisory Committee. That's Virginia. I continue. The reason this community garden got support is because it is for a community of residents brought together in an intimate relationship with the earth, be it growing vegetables, greens, herbs, or flowers. It is not a showcase garden, a demonstration garden. It is not even a master's gardening domain. They have one at the Barnstable County Fair, the master's garden. It's very nicely done, very neatly manicured. It's not like that here. It doesn't mean what have been said that they making a mess. I don't make messes. Anyway, I have been a faithful member of the Committee, attending the meetings, expressing my opinion, and voting. I have and do abide by all town policies and state law related to the community garden and committees. There are absolutely no grounds for my removal from the Committee, but I have to prove it. I occasionally held the dissenting opinion on the Committee. However, I assure you, I have done nothing more than express my own opinion and vote my conscience. I never yelled. I never used crude language. I never acted in any agitated way. I never disrupted meeting procedures. I might have apologized sometime, hey, stomach ache or something, guys, I have to go. At no time during a meeting was I ever called out and ordered by the chair for some reason. And at no time during the presentation that Jeannie presented, the chair, that is, she has said stated facts. She just mentioned generalities. It's fine, but this is not how you argue stuff. You have to present facts. Again, this is very important. At no time during a meeting was I ever called out of order by the chair. In this country, we all have the right of -- to free speech. It's protected by the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and Massachusetts Declaration of Rights. My opinions and my votes are protected free speech. My opinions and votes cannot be used as grounds for removal from the Committee without violating my First Amendment rights. If other committee members do not like me, for whatever reason, or my opinions, this is no grounds for removal from the Committee. Simply being in the minority opinion is no basis for removal from the Committee. Simply expressing my opinion and voting my conscience is no basis for removal from the Committee. And basically, I'm stating opinion, acts. I haven't seen any acts. You were provided a photograph of the rhubarb as a basis for my removal from the Committee. During the March 13 public hearing, we have clarified how town property use policy aid was generally misunderstood by the Advisory Committee and other folks. We established the rhubarb patch is not in any way a violation of a current town policy and cannot be used as grounds for removal from the Committee or to deny me access to a garden plot. You may have been told my garden was ugly, quote unquote, as committee members were overheard saying after the March 13 meeting outside in the lobby. The food I grew in my garden is vastly different from other gardeners and is rooted in my cultural background and national origin. Again, this is not grounds for removal from the Committee or to deny me access to a garden plot. My sincere and genuine efforts to improve committee dynamics have been unreasonably thwarted by committee members. My efforts to volunteer in the area of the community garden were thwarted by lies conveyed by the town by emails from committee member or members. I was accused of removing protected plants from the area, which I did not. I did not, that is, remove anything. To dispute this -- this is in writing, I have emails. To dispute this allegation, I have requested, which is my right, for all documents related to this matter. Despite the freedom of information request, the Committee Chair still refuses to release a complete and full email thread regarding this matter, even though the Chair's emails are considered public records by the state. I am currently pursuing this matter with security of state so that I can fully rebut these false allegations. Secondly, I agree and fully participated in conflict resolution and mediation. However, the compromise I offered was flatly rejected. We're talking about due process. I thought my compromise was fair. I would resign from the Committee, keep my garden plot, and the garden rules would be updated so as to allow for an appeal process. That's a due process. At this point, I contend, I have been damaged by the town in two ways. I have been denied fair access to a community garden plot for no good reason. The community garden is on public land. It was created and is maintained with public funds, and as a resident, I have the right to fair access. And more importantly, my reputation has been called into question during the town's annual election season. For the record, I am running for reelection for the Mashpee Housing Authority. I formally requested that this hearing be continued to after the town election scheduled for May 6, Saturday, but my request went unanswered. You might ask why I would stay involved in town governments? Why would I be actually part of a Committee that wanted to remove me? Well, local government is where we matter most, where we could affect change. I am running for reelection to the Mashpee Housing Authority. My program focuses on accountability, honesty, and fairness. These are the values I brought to the Advisory Committee. I believe the Select Board is committed to the same principles: accountability, honesty, and fairness. In conclusion, there is no fair or just reason for my removal from the Committee. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for both side's statements. At this time, I'd open it up to members of the Select Board for initial comments. We can go to the public first. Does any members of the public have -- yes. Marie Stevenson? Marie Stevenson? Yes, if you come forward, one of the tables can share the mic.
The only thing I would caution the Chair on is unless it is relevant specifically to the merits of what's before the Board, even though it's a public hearing, it is not necessary to allow public comments. It's, it's allowed for public access because that's what this process consists of. So I, I don't know what she's going to attest to. If it's relevant to the merits of this, then that's fine, but if it's not relevant to the merits to this, it's not relevant to your decision as to whether or not there's good cause.
Duly, duly noted. Please keep in mind, Town Managers.
Yes, I, I hear you, yeah. I'm actually going to address the, oh, I'm sorry, Jay Marie Stevenson, and I am the Chair of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, of which Mohammed is a member. It's interesting to me, I'm going to speak just briefly for that, but I, I do have, you know, broader comment here. And, but it's, the person that I'm here described and the behaviors that I've described are not what we see in our particular committee, other than the fact that, yes, Mohammed does sit in the back and he does use the computer and processes in his way. And I have to say that he's probably, I don't know if he's the only member, but we send out an agenda and then we send out very detailed minutes, which we have, and he always responds. I know he reads them, and I know that he is, you know, a contributing and positive member of our committee. Okay? I, I'm addressing to the, to the, to the, to the Select Board and the town, something that really goes beyond that. And all I can say is that I don't know if, if we realize just how much we ask volunteers that come to committees, particularly chairs, and myself included, and, and to understand the complexity of that. And I'm hearing, I'm not making any statements here other than what my own observation of Mohammed, my own committee, but I am making an observation, and I have a background as a language specialist my whole life and participated in many, have run a lot of meetings. And even with that, even with that, I, I have had difficulty. It is hard. It is very, very hard. And what I'm hearing now are all these really deep, you know, concerns and emotions, and I have the highest respect for everybody that serves a volunteer in, in any capacity, and also voted positions as well. But to really understand, you know, how difficult this is to, and, and to deal with these issues when they come, it's very sad to me that we had to have somebody that resigned, that, in, in a town where we need volunteers, we need people, and it's very sad to me that it even had to go to the situation of having, having even to have mediation, because I'm wondering if there are things that could have happened before that, and some assistance to the committee itself when they had obviously conflict and difficulty. I would say that perhaps the town has a responsibility to really look at that and, and to monitor what is going on with these individual committees. And if something like this happens, then maybe, maybe a consultant needs to be brought in to, to assist the, you know, the chair or, and the committee itself in, in knowing what the processes are. It's very complicated. It's, you know, we have individual people, we have dynamics that change when a new, a new committee member comes in. And I want to turn to something that was brought up at the LCP meetings. And that is, there's two, there's two aspects to what was brought up at the LCP meetings. And one is, do we, you know, do we offer training? You know, do we just, and we just say, okay, now you're going to be a volunteer, you're going to be a member of this committee, or you're going to be the chair. And I don't know who too many people that want to be actually a chair in these committees sometimes. So, you know, what, what is in place, what do we put in place in terms of training? It can be as, by the way, as specific, I knew nothing about open meeting laws when I, when I, when I took on this. That's just the beginning, all right? So we need, we need some support. And the other thing that we talked about within the, in the LCP, LCP meeting was to have communication between committees, you know, actually being able to communicate with each other. And one idea I've had that I wanted to propose was that we even can have chairs of all committees, particularly when there's been a change in leadership, a change in new members, that we get together and say, hey, what's working for you? You know, what problems have you had as you have developed the roles of your individual committees? Because these are general rules. So this is what I'm speaking to, is what's the responsibility of the town to support, if you want volunteers, you know, what, what do you do to support people and how can you build, you know, relationships that would really, that would really help each other? You know, because, and I've made mistakes. In the background I have, I'm still, I just finished a course, you'll love the title, here's the irony. The name of the course that I just took was Finding, Finding Common Ground. How relevant is that, right? Even, even then, there's always something to learn. So I would urge you to do that. In terms of, of your decision, I, I just would feel it would be so damaging to, to Mr. Fahad's reputation to just, you know, remove him when he's already going to, you know, resign anyway. You know, I don't, you know, the public isn't necessarily going to be paying attention to all of this process, and all they're going to see is that he was removed from a committee. And I would hate to see that because I see him, myself, my view of him, is that, you know, he's, he's really a well-intended member of our, of our community.
Thank you. We have another member of the audience that wishes to offer public comment?
My name is Cheryl Carberry. I live in Mashpee, and I'm on the board with Ginny and five other people. Listening to Mohammed, I understand what he is saying. I think that the problem has been with Mohammed for the two years that I've been on the board, that he sees things only through his eyes. He has made the last year and a half absolutely miserable for the Mashpee Community Garden. It's his way or the highway. He gets angry, he closes down, he will say something, he'll interrupt, he'll be dismeaning to Ginny by saying, oh, well, let's have the director talk. He is unkind. And I'm glad he has these friends because they are good friends to him. But he has not shown any friendship to us on the Mashpee Community Board. He has not held himself accountable. He has not admitted to any wrongdoing. He has dumped diseased plants all over the garden. He has made a year and a half of trying to grow vegetables miserable. So I want you to understand that the people that are here, that are on the board, we're at our wits' end. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. So if there, are there any other members of the public that wish to offer a comment on this matter? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. Any comments at this time?
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. First one, I guess I'll go to Ginny. August 17th, I believe, and I, again, there was, you had, you read a lot, so was that a meeting that, and was, you mentioned there was a unanimous decision or vote to have him, to have Mr. Fahad removed from the committee?
Yes, so following his comments and additional discussion, Lynn Harris moved at the Board's July 20th vote of no confidence. Backup documentation and request for the Select Board's dismissal of Mr. Fahad be submitted by the Board Chair to the Select Board the next day, August 18th, which I did. I wrote a letter to the Town Manager requesting that and explaining why.
So you meant?
It was August, I think it was our September 20th, let's see, they all merged together. Yeah, and, and what happened was that meetings kept being postponed. Either something else that was significantly important for the town came up, so we got bumped, or a request was made to move it. My concern was that our issues started, actually before then, but very specifically in June of 2022. And we didn't even get to a public hearing until March 13th. And it's just, I mean, I, I understand what people are saying, there needs to be a process, there needs to be understanding, there needs to be communication and an honest exchange. But as Cheryl was saying, everything was contentious in the Board, and not in the, but because of Mohammed.
Could you just clarify? Just, I'm referring to the, you mentioned unanimous vote.
Mm-hmm. He voted for dismissal as well because he wanted to go before the Select Board.
Okay, so that's what I want to clarify. So I had, when you're reading it, I have, and the date really is, as long as it happened. If I could have the date wrong, so.
I think it was August 17th.
On August 17th, I have, there was a unanimous vote to remove Mr. Fahad, and in that unanimous vote, he voted confirming his, his own dismissal.
Yeah. Mr. Fahad explained that he joined the unanimous vote for his dismissal from the Board so that he could present his case.
I'm just clarifying, so if, if you don't mind, if you could, you can respond.
I, I don't have a document in front of me, but I do remember the first occurrence of a vote of no confidence was abstained. Everybody voted. Me, of course, I am against it, but it was also everybody except abstaining, the first, only one abstention came out for Ms. Cadbury. Eventually, she changed her mind, eventually, like recently, but before she abstained the first vote. And it should be written somewhere on minutes.
Yes, in the minutes.
It is in the minutes? Okay, so basically you have your answer. There is seven of us, or maybe it was six at the time. Me, of course, I am against, I didn't accept to dismiss myself, it's oxymoron. And Ms. Cadbury, the one lady, Ms. Cadbury, I don't see her, if she's here, Ms. Cadbury abstained, has the only abstention vote, and the rest voted for me to a vote of no confidence and do a process or whatever. That's the statement.
Okay, so you did not vote?
Of course not.
No, he's talking about the July no confidence vote. August was when we voted, and it's, it's in the minutes right here. We voted unanimously, including Mr. Fahad, that we request the Select Board to dismiss him from the Board. And he stated, as I just said, that he joined the unanimous vote for his dismissal on August 17th from the Board so that he could present his case to the Select Board.
So there is two issues here. The first one was a vote of no confidence, which we already clarified. If there are six of us, me, I am against it, one person abstained, and the rest voted for the no confidence. The second issue we're talking about to make it clear is to go, I told them, hey, you cannot give me, kick me out, we have to go in front of Select Board, and that's a vote. I voted with them that we go in front of Select Board.
Okay.
So basically, it's a going to the vote, not for dismissal to be dismissed, to you decide.
Okay. That's, that's fair.
Exactly.
I just wanted to clarify because unanimous and. Madhuri, you stated in something, in something you said, did you say that Mr. Fahad agreed to step down from the committee? And I don't want to, if I misinterpreted the words, let me know, but I believe you said if you, Mr. Fahad will step down from the committee if he can get his plot back?
Yeah, that was part of the compromise we arrived at, that he would step down from the committee. He really just wanted to have his plot.
All right, but that, but that, so that's true?
That's true, it was what we discussed in mediation.
So.
It was not mediation because I was not at the meeting.
Mr. Collins can confirm it.
Please, I, I need to just keep water, and so one person at a time, anybody that speaks has to be recognized as, recognized by the Chair. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, in regards to the process, which was authorized by this Board, sat down with the parties separately. That was my intent. Sometimes mediation occurs getting all of the parties together, I totally agree with that. But there's also times when you get into a preliminary conversation to determine whether or not there's any common ground. The one thing that I was focused on is whether or not there was something that each party would be willing to compromise on. My own humble opinion was without some sort of compromise, there was not going to be a resolution or successful mediation. What ended up happening is Mr. Fahad and his reps compromised in regards to whether or not he would resign from the, the committee that is before the Select Board right now. And then, secondly, in the process, could he keep his parcel? And then, third, advocate amending the rules. And I did subsequently discuss that with the Chair of the committee, who took it before her committee, and that was not something that was going to be acceptable. Hence, we had to come back here because there was no way to reach a median. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Can I just, one last statement? So again, I just want to clarify what we are here today for. This is a hearing of the Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee pursuant with the Mashpee Charter 7-9, but this is for the removal of Mohammed Fahad from the committee. This has, this hearing has nothing to do with changing of the rules, a hearing, adding a hearing, so none of that is before us today. So this is removal from the committee or not. It's, there's no negotiation if you're, it's either, we, when we close this public hearing, we have to come to a vote and by majority decide whether you are to be removed from the committee by the public hearing or not. That's it. So nothing else that has been discussed today regarding changing of the rules, modifying this, that can't be, that's not in front of us today. I just want to be clear, does, does everybody understand that? Because I, I heard a lot today about changing of rules and getting my plot back, that, that's not before us. That's another day, that's for another day. And maybe at another public hearing, I don't know, but that's, so I've said, I've said my piece.
And if I could, one more thing, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Town Manager.
Under Section 7.9, a member appointed for a fixed or an indefinite term may for good cause be suspended or removed. be suspended or removed from office without compensation, of course, there's no compensation in this case, by the officer or multiple member body which appoints such officers, members of multiple member bodies or employees. The term, cause shall include but not be limited to the following: incapacity other than temporary illness, inefficiency, insubordination, and conduct unbecoming the office. That is what is before you.
And that's pulling from which?
I'm sorry, Section 7.9 of the Mashpee Town Charter. And I can have copies made, I think you did have that.
It's on, it's on.
It's on the agenda.
Does anyone else have, Michaela?
And John, thank you, that, that clarifies, and it keeps us focused on, on what we're deciding. First, I want to say that for all the volunteers here, I appreciate what you do. I know what it's like to serve on committees, and when committees go well, it pushes everybody's thinking, it makes us more productive than we are by ourselves. And unfortunately, when committees, for whatever reason, have a glitch, it can cause a lot of stress and discord, and it's hard to move forward. One thing that I was wondering about, because I was looking back to 2018, and it appears that Mohammed came on the committee in 2018 as a founding member. And there's no disciplinary action, if we can call it that, until 2020, the summer of 2022. And based on what I have in my packet, and I have, I've gone through everything many times, based on what I have, I didn't see any progressive discipline, if that's even part of a committee. But one thing that would be a part of a committee if, in my previous life, would be if people were having difficulty with a member, that they would speak to the member, they would speak to them again, then they would start documenting it. I'm just curious as to how we went from 2018 to 2022 in what seems to be a relatively smooth way, and then this, something must have happened, and everything seemed to change in 2022, which brought us to the, I was going to say suspension, censorship, I can't remember, in July, and then brought us before the select board, or asked to come to the, before the select board in August. So there's a piece that's missing for me there. How did things go along really well, or fairly well, and then there's a, some event, and there's a trigger, and I don't understand what that is, and I think it's important for us to-
So, Tom, did you have any comment or question?
I don't, I think I know where I stand. For me, I do feel as though, outside of the section of the Charter 7.9, the town manager read, you know, reading over the policy 78, and the Mashpee, Mashpee Community Garden Advisory Committee kind of protocols and procedures and things, you know, under the duties, I do feel as though that the document is lacking in kind of roles and responsibilities. We, we did hear a lot between today and the May, in the March 13th hearing. A lot of it, to John's point, was kind of outside of this board's scope. It was relative to other issues that it sounds like have been leading up to this, but are essentially outside of our scope. Our scope, as John clarified, you know, is that, you know, just based on removal, or at the board's request to remove, that's the limit of our authority. And, you know, listening to the various things that were stated today, even in the summary, I'm not sure, reading under the duties and responsibilities and things of that nature, there's no sections within, within the composition of the committee that says, you know, you can't miss so many meetings and things like that. So I, I, I feel as though the document could have added language that clarifies those things and, and sets a, sets a bar for addressing some of the issues that have come up in this situation. You know, that's my opinion. I've read over it, I'm, I'm trying to follow along with all the different chain of events, and that's just something I wanted to point out. Town manager?
I agree, Mr. Chair. Fortunately, this is a first. I've never had a situation where there's a committee standstill in regards to two different positions. So it is a first, hopefully it'll be a last, but I do believe that what we should do, or what I should do, is bring a document back to you, subject to the board's approval, relative to protocols when this type of thing occurs, and then you can review it, and if you agree with it, you can approve it, or if there has to be some fine tuning, then we can get to that. But I think it's obvious that we may need something, and I'll work with town council for the purposes of drafting something, subject to board approval.
I appreciate that. You know, I, I, I like to see things in black and white, to know how, to follow process procedure, and, you know, having things definitively explained as far as expectations of committee members and grounds for removal and things of that nature, I think are prudent and would have proved useful in this situation, for sure. Now, having those things, you know, it's on the board to come to a decision tonight. I think at this time, if there's no further public comment, we can entertain closing the public hearing and then taking a vote.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one more comment before that, if possible.
Yes, sir.
It's okay. Mr. Fahad, I'm looking at, we're, we're in a, we're going to be in a very, a difficult situation. I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, and I'm just thinking what, trying to put myself in your shoes. I think you brought to light some pot, potential changes or modifications that we could do when you're in this type of situation. So I, and I think, as, as the chair just pointed out, maybe we can look at that with the town manager, and, you know, it's not going to solve the problem here and now, but maybe in the future. But as I stated earlier, you know, we can't accept a resignation with saying, okay, now you can get your plot back, because, again, the hearing is for your removal, it's a yes or no. Your term does expire in a month and a half?
We, we, we have June of 2025.
No, that's wrong.
But that's not correct, is what you've indicated. That's what we have.
I have, I have the board members from January, from the town website, and it said that Cheryl ends in 25, and Mohammed ends in 23. And I believe somebody was just trying to clean up the website or whatever, and they ended up flipping those, as far as we knew, because I, I printed, I, I took this off the website in January, we got started. And, and it does show that, that Mohammed is, it says, Virginia, June 2024, Frank, June 2024, John Carter's gone, Lynn Harris, June 2025, Cheryl, June 2025, Mohammed, June 2023, and Kirsten, June 2023.
I'm sorry, Kirsten just got appointed this few months ago, yes, so we are-
Mics, please.
Right, right, right.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, so that's, that was from January, I don't know, I saw the, the website yesterday, and it's like, some, somebody must have just made a typo.
So that, that's-
Kind of a big point.
That's not in dispute, it's, it's June of this year?
Okay.
That's what I always thought, yeah.
All right, so-
Are you done with the comment?
I, I just wanted to, my conclusion is, so, I'm asking if you're, you only have potentially 60 days?
Five minutes, if I have five minutes, I'll make it five minutes, so make it easier for you.
John, if you could wrap up.
So, all right, so 45, you know, 45 days potentially, if you wanted to resign today so we wouldn't have to cast a vote, that's, I'm just throwing it out there. That's just-
Okay.
Okay?
I heard it. May I, there is an issue, I have to answer it. You mentioned, very good point, about the gap, 2018 and then 22 started. The answer to it is very simple, it wasn't my behavior on the, on the committee in general, none, zero, no record of it, not being called out of order, et cetera. The issue was, unfortunately, what I did outside of the binds of the garden. The issue I raised was the compost, and there is a whole story about it, we don't want to go into doctorate paper about it. And the second one is the rhubarb patch, all of these are outside the garden, but it went, we brought it inside. That's a gap, that's what started what's called, quote unquote, animosity, whatever you call it.
Thank you for that.
That's it, there is nothing to do with my behavior or my presence on the board, on the committee, that is, it's a committee.
Thank you for that, yes.
And if I could just clarify one thing that I think is important for you, Mr. Chair, because I think you had brought it up. The parcel in question was purchased in 2005, it was Land Bank at that particular time. The historic district was established in '07, so I did check with council, and it is under the jurisdiction of the board, and to a certain extent, under the authority that is granted to the manager in the charter to me, but it's clearly the board as far as the property.
Right, I, I had raised question with the-
That would be for like a building-
The authority, I think, because it lies within the historic district.
So if there was a building going there, it would-
Be subject to commission approval per the rules of mass historical commission, master laws.
Gotcha. I just wanted to clarify that for you, sir.
Thank you for that. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second?
Having first and second, any discussion on closing of public hearing? Hearing none, Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion was unanimous by all present. So now, we have to take a position on, one way or another, on the request to remove Mohammed Fahd from the community gardens. Does anyone want to frame the motion?
Sure. A motion to ask for the removal.
Second for the point of discussion.
Recognizing the second opening for discussion, Michaela?
As I, again, have gone through and analyzed everything in the packet, and I have empathy for everybody involved, one of the things that's really clear to me, if I take all of the personalities out of this, is what's been presented has much to do with Mr. Fahd's role as a gardener, separate from his role as a committee member. We've talked a lot about gardening, the rules that have allegedly been broken in the garden, and to me, again, with all personalities out of this, this has little to do with serving as a committee member. The second piece that we've talked a lot about, and we've looked at pictures, was the planting on town property away from the garden. We've talked just now, that property really isn't under the purview of the gardening committee, it's separate from that, so it really doesn't fall under Mr. Fahd's role as a committee member. So I see we have a lot of information about his role as a gardener, but that's not what we're asked to decide on tonight, and I just think it's important. I know there may be carryover, but they're different, and I just wanted to say that.
Any other board members have discussion on the motion?
The, the only thing I would caution the board on is, there was some responsibility delegated by the board to the garden committee when the original rules were established, that's all. But aside from that, I don't want to continue this any longer.
Well, so we, because we voted for those rules.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, this, this board voted for those rules, not to say that they, you know, they were perfect, obviously, but we did vote for those rules.
But to your point, the, you know, the rules are outside of our purview, whether or not rules were adhered to as a gardener, are, are, the limit of our scope of our decision and authority is on removal based on grounds that, you know, my point, that I find a bit unclear, reading over the composition and makeup of, of the, the policy that were presented, and, you know, kind of in line with Michaela's position, is that, you know, everything that we heard is substantially, it's been, a lot more has been weighed on, you know, his gardening practices and things. We did hear some statements on the, as far as, you know, personalities and conduct during the meeting of recent, and, you know, that I have to weigh in my decision. But, you know, a lot of the other stuff that I heard relative to the gardening practices and following rules in that state, that's, those are decisions of the actual committee, not, not this board.
Yeah, I mean, understood, but when your personal, when his personal garden habits were brought forward and intermingled into the committee, now it's, that's a problem. When, so, I mean, that's the other thing, is we heard that his, what he did on a personal gardening level were brought into question as a committee member, and as a committee member, you have to judge, unfortunately, it sounds like you have to judge what those individual gardeners are doing. And that committee decided to pull his own personal plot, and it sounded like that was the beginning of a lot of this controversy.
Where we are today.
That's, if you're-
No, I understand, understand a sequence of events, but I do-
It's very unfortunate.
I disagree that it's relevant in this, only because, you know, it, our solely, our sole purpose is to make a decision based on grounds for removal and what's been presented to that effect, and not, you know, that other stuff, that's where we, we should separate, I, in my opinion, just because it's outside of our purview. That's on the committee to determine who's the gardener, who gets a plot, who doesn't get a plot.
Correct.
And enforce regulations, that's outside of our scope.
Right.
Our scope is limited to, you know, were there violations and grounds for removal based on the policies of, that's before us, and what was it, 78? Policy 78, that's the purview, you know? So, you know, that's, that's, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, decisions are focused on that, and not so much on what you described as chain of events leading up to.
Okay, so we have first and a second.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll call the vote.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll call the vote. Carol?
And this is for a removal?
For a removal.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
No.
And I'm a no. That motion passes, three to two.
Did the Board get the APCC correspondence?
We did get that, yes.
Thank you.
What did you want us to do with it?
Just for awareness?
Just information.
And then, old business we took care of, new business we took care of, additional topics, are there any? If there are none, moving on to liaison reports.
Michaela and I will be attending a luncheon for the Senior Center volunteers on Thursday.
That used to be a big event, what happened to that?
Well, COVID hit, and then we couldn't do it.
COVID gone?
So they're doing it, yeah, so we're doing it at the Senior Center.
It used to be fun, we'd go deliver some meals, it was a good time.
And they used to do it at the New Seaberry Country Club.
At least it's being renewed, so that's a good thing.
Yes, starting to come back.
Yeah.
Any other reports? Water quality updates?
Not at this time.
None?
28 will be open shortly.
Oh, hopefully.
Town Manager updates?
Obviously, as a reminder to all people watching, May 1st, next Monday, is our Town Meeting, and we have a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Board of Health, and that is May 8th, 2023.
Okay.
And there are public tours of the Camp Edwards Army National Guard Training Site, hosted monthly on Fridays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If anybody is interested in that, contact our office, we have all of the information. And this is, bird tours at Cape Edwards?
Yeah, grassland and bird tours.
Yeah, grassland, bird tours also at Cape Edwards, late May, early June. And that's all we have.
May I ask a question? I was trying to put the date in my calendar and missed the date. The joint meeting is May 8th, did I understand that correctly?
8th.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It was me.
May 8th, yes.
Thank you.
That concludes, I accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.